Or you say, "What do you think?"
I don't know, you tell me. Mr. Man, why don't you ask your buddies in the intelligence?
I'd like to call the Mammell City Council meeting to order. First order of business is invocation and pledge of allegiance, and I've asked Councilmember Vaprazan to lead us in that tonight.
Let's pray. Father, we love you. We thank you for a beautiful day here and for your blessings to us, for the safety you provided for us today, for the health and the strength that you've given to us, for the many things that we take for granted, for the freedoms that we have here in our country, for our city, and for the people that we get to serve. We thank you for that. Lord, we think of our country, our nation, and even this world, and it doesn't take much time to watch the news, to see so much conflict, so much turmoil, so many people looking for temporary solutions to fix a permanent problem, and we know that you're the answer. I pray that we would be a nation that would turn our hearts to you. You promised us in your word that we don't know what a day is going to bring forth, and so there's not much sense in trying to plan, overplan, manipulate, control, when you're the one who holds tomorrow. So we look to you for the answers, for the wisdom for this evening's meeting, and we thank you for the opportunity to serve this great community. Bless our military, men and women serving, giving us the freedoms that we have to make the decisions that we have tonight. Thank you again for your love for us, for your son, and for all that you've made possible for us. For it's in Jesus' name we pray these things. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the land of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilmember Vaprazan. We have no special guests or announcements tonight, so the next item is the approval of the minutes of the June 5 regular meeting. All the council members have a copy of the minutes in their packet.
Motion to approve.
A motion and second to approve the minutes as submitted. Is there a discussion on that motion? If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no. Motion passes. Next item is public comment. I have no public comment cards tonight. Next item is a financial statement review. Can you have a copy of the April's financials in there? Ms. Thompson was able to get those done for us last week, and those were sent out to you, and you should have a copy of those. Alderman Mosley?
I just, I don't have them in front of me, but I reviewed them before I came tonight, and it looks like our revenues are, and the general fund are running a little below budget, but not necessarily that much below last year. And I think there was one item for like $300,000. That's probably just a timing difference, so it would be the millage.
The millage, and the millage came in in May. Our big checks for millage comes in in May, because everybody pays their taxes in April, and so we collect in May, and actually it'll look a lot better in May because we received $801,000 for our general fund and the millage, and over $200,000 in the street fund.
Okay.
So it should go the other way for a little while, and then you'll see another big check in November, because if you don't pay your property taxes to your mortgage company, most people will pay them on October the 15th, and so you will receive another. The city should receive another large check from the county in November of this year. So even though the budget, you take their overall, divide it by 12, it looks like we're getting behind monthly, but you're actually, it's just the way we do the budget process.
Yeah, so like I said, I don't have any, nothing alarmed me that we saw there, and I appreciate your efforts in getting that out.
Well, it's Ms. Thompson's effort. She's put some late nights in up here, and so was Ms. Timmons also to try to get these out, and hopefully we'll get May's here pretty soon, too, so.
Yeah, the only question I had maybe was as far as the sanitation fund. I noticed our fees are running a little behind. What would cause sanitation fees to run behind a little bit this time of year?
Well, the only thing I can say is the bills just went out. They go out in December, March, and June, and so the bills just went out.
All right.
So that may be it right there.
That may be it, okay.
Yeah, I'm not 100% sure of that, but I think that may be it.
All right. Now, the financials we'll be approving here, are these considered to be, you know, more than estimates? Are they considered accurate, or are they good estimates?
Yes, they are accurate. They are considered accurate.
Okay, considered accurate, all right. So, because I had a question when we approved the financials, I was wondering exactly what we're doing when we approve them. If at times they're an estimate, you know, just say so, and we could always just say we acknowledge receipt of them or something like that.
And they're unaudited, but...
Yeah, right. There's no auditing going on, I realize that. Okay, that's all I've got. Thank you.
And if there's ever a time you have a question prior to the meeting, you can certainly give me a call or shoot me an email, and I can get a more definitive response from
Okay.
an accountant. Hopefully, this time, our next meeting will have someone who could, you know, answer your questions physically here, so. But in the meantime, if you do have a question, feel free to shoot me an email or give me a call.
Everything seemed to be kind of running in line with what we're looking for.
And that's what I look at a lot of times, is look at how we're running to last year, so the trend from last year, and if you look at that, it's relative, you know, for the most part. I mean, you're always going to have, you might have a blip in revenues, and you might have a blip in expenses, and if we buy a big capital item, you're going to see a large jump because of that, or something like that, but, yeah.
Thank you, sirs.
Do I have a motion to accept the April financials?
Some moved.
Second.
Have a motion and second to accept the April financials. Is there a discussion on that motion? If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no. Motion passes. Next item is a procedural motion. I need a motion from the floor that we read all resolutions and ordinances by title only tonight.
Second.
Have a motion and second to read all resolutions and ordinances by title only tonight. Is there a discussion on that motion? If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no. Motion passes. Next item is unfinished business. We have the third reading ordinance number 935, amending the prohibited uses in I-1. Madam City Clerk, if you'd read that by title only.
And some technical difficulties. Let me try that again. Okay.
Hold on, let me see. One's there.
Not sure what's going on, but be it enacted in ordinance of the City Council of the City of Mammell, County of Plaski, State of Arkansas, an ordinance to be entitled ordinance number 935, an ordinance amending the use restriction for I-1 Industrial Park District, zoning district to prohibit the refining and storage of ethanol and other dangerous, injurious, noxious, or otherwise objectionable substance that may create a condition related to fire, explosion, radioactivity, noise, vibration, smoke, dust, odor, other forms of air pollution disturbances, electrical or otherwise, glare, heat, hazardous waste, or other objectionable elements in a manner or amount to adversely affect the health and safety in the surrounding area.
Mayor, I ask that we accept ordinance 935. Make motion.
Second.
Do we have a motion and second to accept or adopt ordinance number 935? Is there a discussion on that motion? If not, Madam City Clerk, roll call vote.
Councilmember Mosley?
Yes, ma'am.
Councilmember Saunders?
Yes.
Councilmember Kelly?
Yes.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Councilmember Timmons?
Yes.
Councilmember Vaprazan?
Yes.
Councilmember Holt?
Yes.
Motion passes. Next item is the second reading of ordinance number 936, smoking ban on walking paths and trails owned by the city. Madam City Clerk, read that by title only.
Be it enacted in ordinance of the City Council of the City of Mammell, County of Plaski, State of Arkansas, an ordinance to be entitled ordinance number 936, an ordinance prohibiting smoking on city walking trails.
Okay, this is on second reading. It would be, it'll be on third reading at the next council meeting. There's no questions or discussion on that item. Move on to the next item, which is the second reading of ordinance number 937, amending chapter 46 of the Mammell City Code. Madam City Clerk, if you'd read that by title only.
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Mammell, County of Plaski, State of Arkansas, an ordinance to be entitled ordinance number 937, amending chapter 46 of the Mammell City Code.
This item is on second reading, so there's no action required tonight. Is there a discussion or questions on this item? Not, we'll move on to the next item, which is the second reading of ordinance number 938, amending chapter 94 of the zoning regulations. Madam City Clerk, if you'd read that by title only.
Be it enacted in ordinance of the City Council of the City of Mammell, County of Plaski, State of Arkansas, an ordinance to be entitled ordinance number 938, an ordinance amending chapter 94 zoning regulations of the Mammell City Code to account for amendment 98 of the Arkansas Constitution.
This is also on second reading, and so no action is required on this item. It's basically, as we stated at the last meeting, it's to address the state amendment to allow for medical marijuana dispensaries and cultivation facilities within the city. There's no discussion or questions. We'll move on to the next item. Moving on to new business, we have resolution number 2017-17, amending the 2017 general fund budget. Madam City Clerk, if you'd read that by title only.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of Mammell, Plaski County, Arkansas, resolution 2017-17, a resolution to amend the 2017 Mammell general fund budget.
This is the item that our previous finance director, Ms. Courtney, brought to the attention through a memo to the council that we'd made a budget transfer from the HR department to the fire department to cover construction costs. And Mr. City Attorney, did you want to address that?
Yeah, so I wanted to give some additional information, because I spent a pretty good amount of time trying to figure out what the level of budgetary control is. That is, at what level can funds be moved from one line item to the next line item? I found no ordinances on the matter. I found no state statutes or cases on the matter. What I was looking at is what the practice of the city has been. So I went through the audits from 1999 to present, several of which were legislative audits. From 99 to 2006, there was no mention in the budget of budgetary control, what the level of budgetary control is, which isn't too uncommon. I've looked at other cities. Some mention it, some don't. From 2006 to 2009, there was a statement in the audit that says the city maintains budgetary control within departmental units and funds by not permitting expenditures and encumbrances to exceed the appropriations at the fund level, which was legal level of control. In 2010, that essentially changed from the fund level to the department level. I was unable to track down any minutes. That was the only year that I went through the minutes of the council meetings to try and find some change. There were no resolutions for any of the years that I could find, and no ordinances addressing what the council's intent for the fund level was. Interestingly, those statements in the audits are based upon a letter that is given to them by the mayor. Going back to 2004, the letter said that the budget is prepared by fund and department. Department heads may request transfers in non-personnel line items within the department, subject to the mayor's approval. From 2005 to 2012, it said the budget is prepared by fund and department, legal level of control. Department heads may request transfers within the department, subject to the mayor's approval. Transfers between departments require the adoption of a resolution by the city council. So interestingly, that line has been that way in the letter that's given to the auditors and then included in the audit since 2005, but in 2010, somewhere it changed in the audit from, you know, from fund level to department level. I can't figure out why that is. But anyways, when we look at what the practices of the city are, the closest I can come up with is that it's in the audit, and then the audit is accepted by the city council. However, I mentioned before that it might be prudent to put it in the ordinance. What some cities do, such as Jacksonville and Little Rock, is they just include a statement in the actual budget that's being approved stating what the level of budgetary control is. In Jacksonville, their budgetary, their level of budgetary control is at the fund level. So think general fund or sanitation fund. Little Rock organizes theirs based on an organizational level, and I wasn't quite certain what that is. And then I looked at a bunch of other places. North Little Rock has it in an ordinance. I'm not quite sure what it means after reading the ordinance several times, but it's there. And then countless cities, I just couldn't find anything mentioned in there in the budget itself or in the code. So, for example, I looked at Bryant, Benton, Cabot, and I just wasn't able to find what that is. So with all that being said, I think the most prudent action is to have this resolution for y'all to consider. And I'd be happy to answer more questions if there are any, or I may have sufficiently confused.
Councilmember Kelly?
Thank you, Mayor. So the resolution there is to correct what we did in the past when the mayor just moved the money from the one department to the other?
Well, so according to the audits from 2006 to 2009, that would have been an appropriate transfer.
Correct.
But somewhere it changed to where, the way it reads now, which is, I guess I'm going to say is the practice of the city. It's been, the council accepts the audit or approves, depending on the motion, in the different years. But in there, it says that the budget is prepared by fund and department, legal level of control, but that transfer from one department to the other should be adopted by a resolution of the council. And so that's what this resolution is.
Okay. Thank you, Councilmember Kelly. Councilmember Mosley?
All right, let me just be clear here. We, at this point, you found no violation of the law, but if we violated something, it was in the practice of what's been taking place since 2010. Is that correct? Is that a fair way to say it?
Well, in some cases, a violation of the practice could be a violation of the law. And so, in other words, what they're trying to look at, whoever it was that's going to be examining it, is what was the council's intent when it budgeted certain things? Are we, was it the council's intent that it was literally, you know, line item by line item, and that for every line item transfer, say from the travel fund or line item to the gasoline line item, needs to come back to the council, or was the council's intent at the fund level or the department level? It appears as though it's at the department level, anything that goes from one department to the next.
Okay.
So, how do you think, definitive? That's as of 2010.
Yes, since 2010. We obviously don't have a budget, or we don't have the audit for 2016, and we obviously don't have one now. It's not the best way to do it, because the audit obviously occurs after the appropriations, and so I think it'd be more appropriate to have it in the budget that's approved, along with some other statements that we include in the audit. Just roll those over, have them in the budget, and then it'll be clear what the council is doing when it makes those appropriations.
But you still, and I think we should, do you still think we need to go ahead and codify whatever we decide ought to be the thing, just to avoid confusion in the future?
That's one way. So an ordinance is one way. North Little Rock has done that, and then other cities such as Little Rock and Jacksonville, just include it in the actual budget. So it would explain, right now, our budget is a cover page followed by write-in to the numbers. Actually, our ordinances say that there should be more to it, a budget message and sort of an overview, and so it can either be in that part, or a resolution, or an ordinance. I don't know that there's a strong, I don't necessarily have an opinion as to which of those it should be. I just, I think it should be before, before the money is spent, not after.
Did you have more questions, Councilmember Mosley?
I've got some more, but I'll let somebody, if somebody else has got some, go ahead.
Okay.
I've got other lights on.
Well, go ahead with the others here for a minute.
Councilmember Holt?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. For my own peace of mind, I did call and spoke to one of the auditors from the meeting that we went to, joint legislative audit, I was blank, and explained generically, as close as I could, our situation. Obviously, he was very cautious and very careful about giving any legal opinion, but as best he could understand based on what I was saying. He found no wrongdoing, inasmuch as the funds that were transferred went to departments in, steer here in the city, and he felt like that it was appropriate that if the council chose to go ahead and adjust the budget to place the money back in that imposition, that was okay. There was not doing anything wrong, that it would be handled, I think, as you were just speaking, at the end of the year in the audit, that it would be handled in process then, but he saw nothing particular wrong with it. So I told him I would go home and lick my wounds then, so everything would be fine. So I had been sort of hostile about it, I thought, you know, but I don't, I'm not, you know, I wish nobody any ill. So if that be the case. However, I'm going to say this. In the resolution that we're doing here, I would have preferred that there was, we're sort of okaying a generic process here, that we have no, I see it says, there's just, the money in the human sources was vacant and didn't need it, so we put it over there. Well, the fact that we didn't need it is really quite sort of irrelevant to me. It still got moved anyway. In this particular case, because it would sort of tend to set a precedent, I'm going to go ahead and vote no on this, but I just wanted to explain my reasoning. But there was no legal fault found. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Saunders?
Thank you, Mayor. I just, I wanted to remind everyone that in our budget meetings of the last few years, one of the things we have been doing is effectively department level, because we're not doing line items anymore. We're saying as a department. You know, you get this much money, you're the director, you figure out how to use it with cooperation with the mayor. So I think the department level is probably where we have already all agreed to be anyway.
That was the intent.
So I think that would support what we're doing in budget. So that's all I've got.
Thank you, Councilmember Saunders. Councilmember Kelly?
Thank you, Mayor. This past week, Councilmember Holt and I attended a legislative audit workshop at the municipal league, and this was hosted by members of state government and the municipal league. And the one point they made was if you have a, if your budget is under a resolution, any changes to it are under resolution. You don't mix ordinances and resolutions. So if we're going to have our budget under an ordinance, we need to make sure these funds come to us as ordinances, these changes. But I have to agree with Councilmember Saunders, that the bottom line is, we have been developing the budgets at a department level, and I see nothing wrong with adopting the language into our budget as a resolution at the beginning of the year, and then we make changes at the department level with the resolution. But unless we give that guidance in writing, best practice is whoever's happens to be in the chair. And I think that's where we fell short, is that we need to have those constraints out there. We need to do that.
Make them clear.
Make it clear in the budget process, and in the writing or the preamble to the budget, that this is how we're going to conduct business. That's my opinion.
I agree.
Thank you, Councilmember Kelly. Councilmember Mosley?
Yeah. City Attorney Norris and I had had a discussion, I guess, when was it, Friday? I'm not sure when, Thursday or Friday, but one thing that, that City Attorney Norris talked about was the concept, too, of perhaps within department, also limiting it by, I guess it was by operations and personnel and capital expenditures. And so that that would, there may be a time, if we had a mayor or department heads that was interested in going his own way during the course of the year, we might have budgeted for a $400,000 fire truck, and he would decide he'd rather maybe hire firemen or something instead of fire trucks. So that's something that I think we ought to consider doing also, is just make sure that, you know, there's no transfers in that regard. But in the past, we really haven't had that problem. The mayor has kept that in line, and whatever we budget is, has pretty much been spent on, so. But I think that bears consideration.
And I would be fine if you put that language in there, but that's always been my thought, or what's always been told to me by finance directors, is capital items cannot go back into operating or personnel. So capital items are capital items since they're separated out, basically in a line item type situation, but it would be fine if that was in the same resolution, that you couldn't move capital items into operating or something like that.
Okay, okay. Good. I wanted to make...
You know, it's been a standard practice. I don't know that it's in writing. I'll say that, so.
Yeah, you've had, I mean, it's been a practice, and that's one thing you look for when you're an accountant or something. You look for consistency and whatever, you know, a lot of times you go, okay, so there's nothing in writing. What's been the practice? You know, and that counts for things. And so, I mean, that's, if you're, you know, if you're looking for consistency, that's what you ask for next. Let me ask real quick, too, about, and I agree with Alderman Holt over there. I'll be voting no for the same reason he is. But the, this item that put us over the top, what was that for? Usually, we, don't we, we bid out a construction project like that, and it's usually for a fixed price. Is that correct?
Well, yes, it can be for a fixed price, and it was for a fixed price in this case. Yes, you can also bid them out based on quantities. Road projects sometimes are done on a quantity basis, but this was a lump sum price.
All right. Well, if we had that, had a price, and it was within our $2,400,000 or whatever, how did it happen to go over?
Well, we spent some items for furnishings that were furnitures, beds, and desks, and things like that to go into the facility. And then we also, as I stated last time, we were paying $166 per month. And so I think it was the $15,000 in furnishings, and then a total of...
Like you said, about $6,000 or...
$6,000, $7,000, and that's where the $23,000 came up short.
All right, all right. So, and we didn't do that on purpose, I guess, at all?
No, we did not do that on purpose. I guarantee you that. Well, I sent a budget request for this amount of money, and they said, "You don't have that much money in your account." And I said, and I'd made an error. My spreadsheet had an error in it that wasn't adding everything up, because I was tracking it. It looked like to me I had extra money in there.
Yeah.
But it had missed, you know, it had missed adding numbers... But it had missed, you know, it had missed adding numbers up. It had stopped short of where I was keying them in at, I guess, or something like that.
Okay.
But, so I went back through and checked all my numbers. They were right and I was wrong, because I was sure they were wrong. So when it started, then I was not.
All right, well, that's all. Yeah, that's all.
It was an honest mistake. That's the best thing I can tell you.
That's all.
Councilmember Mosley.
Okay, okay. All right, that's all I've got tonight. Thank you.
Councilmember Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Make a motion that we accept Resolution 2017-17.
We have a motion as second to adopt Resolution 2017-17. Is there a discussion on that motion? If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no.
No.
I believe it's six to two.
Sounds right.
Okay, all right. Next item is email from Councilmember Mosley regarding 2010 Arkansas Code. Councilmember Mosley?
All right. I just wanted to put that in there, just to be, be clear that even, even the law and, and I've, I've found basically the same wording in some handbooks at the municipal league where it really emphasized that the city council has, you know, that's one of our primary responsibilities, the city finances. So as far as I'm concerned, anytime we, we get a letter like we got and it's from CPA and, and you, you pay attention and you, you look at it and you, you follow up and that's the prudent thing to do. And it's not, not to overreact, but it's also not to underreact. It, it, it kind of needs to be done. And I, and I still would like to, I would like to see us have an audit committee. And, and the reason for that would be to maybe determine whether we try to do an ordinance to codify this, or whether we just do it during budget time or whatever. And I'd like to, an audit committee would just meet like a workshop. And we could either formalize it or, or just have this informal, whoever's interested in doing this. But also, I think, under the purview of an audit committee, we should, we should just, all the items that were in that letter at some point, and not now, I'm not going to go in and change the way procedures are done or advocate that. But as soon as we hire a finance director, I think it would be an audit committee's, it'd be prudent just to make sure every item was addressed in some way. Either it was something that was not important, or it was important, it's going to be corrected and that sort of thing. I'd also kind of like to know why, why our auditors hadn't found any of those weaknesses that were put in that letter. There, there were a lot of weaknesses. Some of them are material, some are not. And I think an audit committee should also investigate the possibility of having an, a legislative audit, say every other year or whatever. I'm not, I'm not an expert on, on how to get a legislative auditor, or what all they do differently. But that would be something I think an audit committee should look into. So I'd be interested in hearing what other folks have to say. But I would ask the city attorney, what would we need to do? Would we need to set something up formally, like by ordinance or resolution, to have an audit committee or?
I'm not quite sure what you mean by that. If you're talking about a standing committee that just stands in perpetuity, then I'd recommend it be done by an ordinance on that. If, if we were, if you were talking about something such as, we have the signed task force committee that's looking at signage, but it's not a standing reoccurring committee, something like that, could just be done by, by motion.
Okay, okay. Well, I guess in that regard, I'd, I'd like to make, make a motion that we, we do go ahead and do a task force committee. Yeah. And anybody that wants to be on, as far as Alderman, that's, would be great. And we could just schedule a workshop meeting as a public meeting and have, have the first one maybe in a couple of weeks or something like that.
Oh, I thought you wanted-
Hang on.
I'm waiting to be recognized.
Okay. Are you down, Councilmember Mosley? Councilmember Kelly?
Thank you, Mayor. I agree that we need to provide guidance because we found a hole, right? We got this practice that's been going on, on the department level, but we really haven't given direction to the mayor that that's how we want to do business. Am I wrong?
That's the way I interpret it.
That's the way I interpreted the conversation.
So part of, I think, what Councilmember Mosley's talking about is, is of course that letter that we received-
I'm, I'm kind of summarizing the conversation we had before. I'll get to that in just a moment. I agree with the concept of possibly a legislative audit, but not until we have a financial director. I want a financial director to come in and look at our books and to be a part of that committee. The second P, and you've mentioned that as well, we should wait until that point. I, I think it's not prudent for us to be digging in the books when we don't know what we're looking at.
That's correct.
The other side of this is that once we have the, the financial director in place, the other question I've got is, the accusation in that letter was that there were another 45 items, because there was 15 listed and she said there was a total of 50 items. Have you received the additional items?
I have not. I believe it has been requested, though.
Okay, that's my point. This was an accusation. We know we had a practice here that wasn't against the law. Probably not the best practice. And we, as having the fiduciary responsibility for the city, allowed that to happen because we don't have our budget figured out in any of the ordinance or resolution and laying out the rules. And all I can say to that is we can address that. And then we can look at our, look at each one of those items, once we have a financial director on hand, and make sure that all of that is straightened out. That's where I'm coming from. But for us to, to develop a committee and start digging through the books, I am not for that one.
No, that's not what I was, I was saying. Just, it's mainly to follow up. And I don't know that her letter is, I wouldn't call it accusations anyway. It's just a, it was a list of things that she found that probably-
Many of which were best practices.
Yeah.
And many of which were leadership issues.
Well, yeah. And I, and I'm not as interested in the, the latter.
I'm interested in the whole thing.
Are you?
Because the whole thing affects the operation of the city.
Well, I mean, I'm not opposed-
We're going to look at it. We're not going to do the selective stuff.
All right. Well, I'm not, I'm not opposed to doing that.
Thank you, Mayor. I've said my piece.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. We have a motion, we have a second to form an audit committee. And just to, to try to keep everybody here, Ms. Timmons and I have interviewed several finance directors and we're very close, I think, to getting somebody on board. But I don't know if it'll be within two weeks or not, but that, that'd be the only thing is I would say right now, is we've interviewed five, six?
Oh, six.
Six, yeah. So we've interviewed finance directors. It also centered, interviewed, I've interviewed HR directors also. So, so we're working on getting those gaps filled right now. So, well, as soon as possible, not right now, but as soon as possible. So, and if they've got, if they're employed somewhere, they've got to give two weeks' notice and that sort of thing. So just keep that in mind when you're setting a meeting or something like that. And I would, I would, I think it might scare them if you, if we hold a meeting on their second day here or something like that. But yeah, but that's my only concern is, yeah, give them a little time to get acclimated. But the committee can meet and, and just start formalizing a plan.
Yeah.
Yeah. So we have a motion as second to form an audit committee. And as I understand it, there's no limit to the number of people that can be on it. It's whatever, as many councilmembers as want to attend. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Councilmember Mosley?
Yes.
All right. Councilmember Kelly?
Only comment I have, and I'm, I'm going to vote against it at this point, is I would rather see the financial director hired and in place. And then I'm all for it. But I, I think we're kind of getting cart before the horse here.
Okay. Well, if, if it fails tonight, I'll just bring it up at a later time.
I got no problem with that. All right.
Councilmember Timmons?
Councilmember Kelly, that's exactly what I was going to say. I'd like to see an audit committee. But I'd like the new finance director be a part in appointing or when we get one.
Thank you, Councilmember Timmons. Councilmember Saunders?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll also be voting against this. I agree with, with Councilmember Timmons and Councilmember Kelly. I think we need the finance director here. We don't need to get in a hurry with this thing. I would say we even need to give the finance director a little time to sit in that chair before we start pounding on him, okay? So I'll be voting against this at this time. Now later on, no problem.
Okay. So the lights I have. Councilmember Holt?
Under the circumstances, would the Alderman Mosley care to withdraw the motion and let's wait until we do get the director here and then go from there? I mean, why vote no and then for no reason at all? He can just withdraw it. That would be all right.
Would you, you know, be in agreement with that to withdraw?
Absolutely, yes.
All right. Well, I'll withdraw it at this point. Bring it up again next meeting or whatever. I just thought maybe it would be best to at least show we were, we were heading toward this. Then we wouldn't have to meet right away anyway, so. I, I don't know. Let's go ahead and vote it down. I want to see it voted down. I'm not going to withdraw it after all.
Okay.
I'll leave it in.
Leave it as it is?
Yeah.
Okay.
But you won't hurt my feelings.
You say it's not going to hurt your feelings?
No.
All right. If there's no other discussion on the motion to form an audit committee that, to be made up of council members and not limited to the number. All those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no.
No.
I believe it was two, four, and six against. Is that correct?
I seconded the motion.
You don't actually have to, but yeah.
Appreciate it, Jess. Thank you.
City Attorney Norris?
Councilmember Mosley, what I'd recommend, maybe we could get together and come up with a resolution or just more to it than an audit committee. Maybe kind of think about the concept of what their duties and role would be if it's only limited to members of the council. Or, you know, just kind of think of some of these things and we can either incorporate that in a motion or a resolution.
Let's, let's get an email and decide on a time we get together. Thank you.
Yeah, of course.
Councilmember Timmons?
I'd also like the finance director to be part of that, trying to create the resolution or whatever it's going to be. Because he probably knows more about what we need than, than we do.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Well, I hope not, but yeah. May make his job easier, or their job, his or her.
His or her, yeah.
His or her, yes, their job. All right. Did you have anything else that you-
No, I think, I think everything was talked about. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Councilmember Mosley. Next item is mayor's comments. And I just put this in here just so everybody's aware of it. Your council meeting will be on July the 3rd. The next day is a holiday, so I didn't want everybody to run out of town on me and not be here on it. I see a cringe over there. Uh-oh.
I'll be here.
So it's a Monday night, July 3rd, which is, that's not, July 3rd is not a holiday, but July 4th is. And so I wanted to just put that in here as a reminder for everybody.
I, I may be gone. And if there's, say, four or five of us that may be gone, maybe we ought to look at moving it. But if everybody else is going to be here, I-
Sounds like most, most of them are going to be here then. So, yeah. And that, but that, yeah. But if, if y'all find out differently, let us know so that we can make arrangements or do something. Because we have to call a special meeting to move the meeting or something. But just wanted y'all aware of that. And then so July the 4th, we'll start our Fourth Fest at 4:30 in the afternoon, kick off with the parade. Then the cardboard boat races as soon as that's over. And then we'll be doing various activities with inside Lake Willistee. The food trucks and just different games for the kids. And then we'll give out parade awards and cardboard boat awards and all that. And then music will kick off around 7:30, 7, 7:30 I believe it is. And then the fireworks will go off around nine o'clock, 9:15, as soon as it gets dark. And so I want everybody to come out for the Fourth Fest events and enter parade, enter the parade and cardboard boat race. You've still got time to build a boat that might float or may not float. I actually was thinking about doing that, but I've given up on it now, so.
Given up?
Yeah. I'm going to get a boat with a motor. I don't want a cardboard boat that I got to paddle. And then the other thing I just wanted to mention, since brought up fireworks, we had the dragon boat festival over the weekend out at Lake Willistee. Also huge crowds on Friday and Saturday. It was huge. And they were parked all over and it was a great event. And a big fundraiser for the Children Protective Services. And, but then they shot off fireworks, I guess, Friday night at about 9:10. And a lot of people weren't aware of that and scared some people initially. So, but that's what it was. It was fireworks from the dragon boat races. And then the only other thing I want to mention is that we did attend, several members of the council attended the Arkansas Municipal League. And I thought the leadership class on Wednesday afternoon was great. Thought they had a really good speaker. And then they had a motivational speaker Thursday morning that talked about selling alone around the world, 26,000 miles, took nine months or something like that. And a 38-foot slash 40-foot sailboat by himself. There's no way. I, I couldn't do that. And so, but the motivational part basically was there are no barriers, just solutions and that sort of thing. Every time he got hit with a roadblock, he came up with something to fix it and keep going, including pumping water out of his boat for four days with a hand pump or something like that. And I'd have had to go to sleep sometime during that time, but he didn't. So, but just very, and he's from South Africa, so he had an accent, even though he's speaking English. It was a little hard to understand a few of those words, yeah. But, yeah, what, what did you just say? You know, but, but excellent topic. And then the breakout sessions were good. I went to one on cybersecurity. I know some of them went to the one on legislative audits. So there were some really good breakout sessions this time also. So I thought the league did a great job on this conference, convention. Appreciate everybody that took time out of their busy schedules to come out and do that also. All right. Next item is planning commission report. And there is no planning commission meeting in June. So whoever had that got off the hook easy. Look at there, Councilmember Anderson. Councilmember's comments. Councilmember Vapres in?
Just one of the status of the bond project with the Crystal Hill Road, where we're at with that.
Well, we're working on trying to get some right-of-way issues. And I actually had a very good meeting with Mr. Osborne the other day to try to get that thing moving forward a little bit too.
How many right-of-ways are we still looking for, do you know?
We're still looking for most of them right now. So, yeah. And I've been concentrating on Counts Massey, but it's about to wind down. I mean, so I'm going to start working on that one. Just trying to get some right-of-ways and get some people to help me on that.
Any imminent domain situations or?
I, I don't, I don't want to, I don't know. I don't know yet. I hope not. Now, if we can't resolve with one or two, it probably will be imminent domain issue.
Is there anything we need to do as far as extending the bond project? Are we within our limits?
Well, we, we sent a letter and told them what the holdup was. We're, we're still within our, barely within limits on the 2014 bond issues.
What's our-
Three-year limits.
Okay.
But showing progress is one thing. So if we can show some progress, we have the design done. It's a matter of getting some right-of-ways. So we can show that. And we'd sent them a letter last year stating that, you know, we were having some issues with some right-of-ways. And I really hadn't concentrated on that. Tried to concentrate on Counts Massey. And the, the portion of Counts Massey that's in North Little Rock and Marmel, the existing portion, a quarter mile of it's all in North Little Rock. And then there's a portion that half of it is on the north side, is at our baseball fields. And the south side's in North Little Rock. That will be bid on Sunday. And the bid advertisement will be in Sunday's newspaper. We've been trying to get that project moving for a while now. And it's, it's moving forward again. The, the other portion is, you know, 90% done, but you, you can't get there from here, kind of deal. You have to drive down a little narrow road to get down to where there's a wide road. But that hasn't been overlaid yet. But, so we've been working on that one, trying to get it progressed. And now I can kind of start focusing on Crystal Hill.
I also, because I was gone last meeting, didn't have a chance to thank you and everyone who worked hard for the public hearing that we had at, at the community center several weeks ago. And it was much different than the first. And we had great participation and was very encouraged by that. I wanted to thank you and everyone who was able to be a part of it.
And the application for that Morgan Marmel wastewater project has been turned in. It was due June 1st. It's been turned in. And the application for that Morgan Mammell wastewater project has been turned in, it was due June first, it's been turned in. We haven't heard anything, so, and I don't know when we're going to hear something, to be honest with you, it could be months before we hear back from that, so.
I went, you got it?
It, it's thick, yeah.
About an inch and a half thick.
Yeah, yeah. Councilmember Timmons?
Okay, I had a neighbor that was asking about the River City Dragon races because of the noise. She said last year, we said that we would turn the speakers.
Yeah, they were directed. They were turned.
Yeah, the other way, and she wanted to know if that was happening, and she called me, well, I was in Dallas when she called. But she wanted to know if we had done that because her little dog was going crazy. Is it also, is it also a way that, for the permits for the fireworks, do we get? Do we get notice of that so we can let our neighbors know to put the dogs and stuff up?
Well, the, the, well, the fire chief and police chief have to sign off on the permit. Now, there was, the banner on the boulevard had that there were fireworks, I believe is what it said on it. Now, it was hard to read, I will tell you that much, there was too much stuff on that banner, and so then that makes it difficult. But, I mean, how are we going to get noticed everywhere?
I'm just asking.
We can put it on the. Website.
Yeah, yeah, so it was posted, I mean, out, but.
Okay, so I can just tell her she can put it on the website?
But it, there's always going to, you know, unless you, even if you mail to mail it to everybody's house.
People say they don't get it yet.
I just tell her, go to, go to the website.
Yeah, yeah, and the, but the, they've had fireworks every year they've been out here, and so when it says dragon, hopefully people remember that from year to year, but.
Yeah, well, she did too, she, she asked me, I guess it was Thursday, if, if they were going to do fireworks also. She said her little dog went crazy or something. And she said the fireworks went off for twenty minutes, twenty, twenty-five minutes.
Well, that, that, they did not, they went off for about seven minutes, and then there was a lapse, and then they went off again. So, there was, they lasted long, but there was a pause in the middle for some unknown reason.
Said they shot, set off boomers also.
Okay.
Well, they, they shot off fireworks, yeah, so, yeah, it's, yeah, but it's, they did, they did set them off. But, I mean, it was, you know, it went, it started at nine, ten and went for like seven minutes the first time, and I thought it was done. And then there was a pause, and then they went off again for another, and I didn't time the second time, three to four minutes, probably.
I didn't think it was very long, because it's, it, it lasts a very long time, at Fourth of July, this was not new.
Yeah, no, Fourth of July is typically twenty minutes, it's when, when we shoot that one off, and this was not that long.
It's like ten minutes, my dog went crazy too. He lives in my car, so she goes crazy all the time.
Right, I was going to say. It's relative.
But it, you know, for bringing that many people to Mammell, though, it's a great event, I mean, it was.
Huge, so many people.
Yeah, I know, it's an excellent event.
Yeah, to bring people that don't normally come to Mammell, because I was walking around, I knew people, but I didn't hardly know anybody from Mammell. I knew people from Little.
Yeah, me too, me too.
Councilmember Saunders?
Thank you, Mayor, for those that don't know it, and everybody probably does, we had another serious accident at Count, or at South Odom and Club Manor Saturday night. And it happens all too often at that intersection, now I've been pushing for a long time for a roundabout there. Is there any way we can expedite this?
Well, the council can budget the money and we can move forward with it.
Well, we were trying to get.
We were, but the, the highway department, they're, they're, they approve projects in the order of when you got your last money. So, they're working on like two thousand twelve and thirteen projects, we got our money in two thousand fourteen, so it might get approved next year. You know, and we have to request every year, we have to send a new request every year for it. But they base it on when you got your last one, and then they're ranking them that way so that everybody kind of stays in a line type deal. Now, it's three hundred fifty to five hundred thousand dollars, that's what our estimate was, but if the council chooses to expedite it. But the wreck was not at night, it was in the daytime, and a car turned on its top, but there was no serious injuries. But the, a lot of the issue is just people not being patient and going through that intersection. And, you know, will a roundabout stop every accident? It won't.
Not every accident, but.
It won't be a TPO.
But I'm afraid we're going to hit a point where someone's going to be seriously hurt or killed at that intersection, you know.
But the council could approve, if you so ask us, we'll get it, we'll go out, select an engineer and start design on it, but.
Eric Holloway already has some design work done.
Well, he's got a schematic design, there is no survey work been done or anything like that been done, so.
I think with the fire station being there, that would be the best spot to put a roundabout, I think that would be.
We discussed it during budget, didn't we?
We did, we discussed it during budget the last two years, but.
Thought we were going to work on design this next budget cycle. I might be getting it mixed up with the other project.
Well, I'm not sure, but I don't remember.
We talked.
We did, in fact, we, we gave you money to.
To work on design.
On, to work on design.
Not for the roundabout, you gave us money last year to do the design for the Lake Point, and it's been bid out. But I don't, I don't think there's money for the, I don't have it in our, it's not in my budget to do any design on the roundabout.
Maybe I'm confused.
We had a lot of discussions.
Well, yeah, we discussed it, so, I may be wrong.
We did the design on Lake Point, it was approved for it last, last year, and it, then, then the rest of the construction money was approved this year. But to the best of my knowledge, I'll go back and look at the budget, but I don't remember any money being set aside for the design of the roundabout. I'm a little bit like those guys, I thought we did set aside a little bit or something.
I did too. Go ahead and do the engineering part of it.
I'll go look at it, but.
Design or something.
Councilman Lewis had brought it up, and he had a friend of his do some kind of a design.
Oh, that was, that was before. That was the year before.
I mean, since I've been on.
He's only been gone a year, I mean, or not less than a year, but it was last year, a year before.
Where you at? Well, I know you're going to hear about it, I keep bringing it up every chance I can. It's a dangerous intersection.
Yeah, what do we do next, that's what we need to talk about, I don't get it done.
Well, we might go ahead and just start the design if it's not in the budget. Yeah, do a resolution and a lot of little bit of money, you know, to go ahead and start the design.
All right, you're right, it was, okay, my fault, all right, the sixty thousand dollars was set aside for design. Okay, you're right.
At least we're moving forward.
Okay, all right. I didn't remember that at all, okay, you're right, I was wrong.
Oh, that's good.
But we got to go out for procure, we got to do a request for qualifications, we can't just give it to somebody, so we got to do selection, do a request for qualifications.
As long as we're moving forward, I'm happy.
All right, we'll do, we'll get that advertised and get it started then. All right, any other councilmember comments, Councilmember Mosley?
I'd just like to thank City Attorney Norris for being as thorough as he is. I mean, he just showed again, he's Mr. Thorough over there, you dig into his computer and find it, he's thorough, thank you very much.
Relying on all our memories is definitely not thorough.
I didn't remember that at all. All right, any other councilmembers' comments? Mr. City Attorney?
No, sir.
Madam City Clerk?
Yes, I need a liaison for the July planning commission meeting, I believe that's the twenty-seventh.
And yes, I would have already asked, but I, I'm actually going to be going to my son's reunion at that time, so.
I'll do it, because I'm going to have a request on there, so.
That's all I have.
But yes, that would make sense that I do that, I understand everyone.
All right, is that it? If there's no other business to come before the council, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
A motion as second to adjourn, all those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no?